Welcome, everyone. I'm going to call the July 1st, 2025 Regular Scheduled Board Meeting to order. I've asked Commissioner Perkins to lead us in the prayer, and then Commissioner White's going to lead us in the pledge with his festive tie.
Let us stand and pray. God in heaven, we come before you this opportune time, dear God. We oblige, sir, before you to tell you thank you. We thank you, Father, for how you have blessed us and watched over and kept us while we slumming and slept all last night. We woke one due time this morning, dear God, allowed us to go through this day. We thank you, Father, for this opportunity, dear God, to serve the people of this community. As you look upon this board in the mighty way, God, give us direction to go, dear God. Look on our chairman, dear God, given the wisdom and knowledge to understand and lead this board, and God, this board shall follow. Look on our departments, God. Look on all of our workers, continue to keep them safe while harm in danger as they progress to keep this county in good shape and beautified by their beautiful work. As long as God, you look upon anyone that's here, dear God, bless them in the mighty way. We ask for God that you continue to bless us and keep us in your care. And we ask that you look upon those, dear God, who fight for our freedom, dear God, own foreign soul, dear God, protect them and protect their families, bless them in the mighty way. We ask them, Father God, to look upon those, dear God, that's servants, dear God, in the White House, dear God, every branch, dear God, that you bless and look on, dear God, bring their minds together, dear God, in the oneness of unity, dear God. And they will, God, do the thing that's right and pertinent for this nation, dear God. We thank you for this nation, dear God, that you have blessed us with. We thank you, Father God, for all who have labored, dear God, and created. And then, God, on this coming Friday, God, as we serve, dear God, Independence Day, let us all rejoice and remember those, dear God, who have fought for our freedom. And Father, we give you praise and glory in Christ we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in indivisal, with liberty and justice for
Okay, item number one is the approval of the minutes for the June 17th, 2025 Regular Scheduled Board Meeting. I had one, just Mr. Clerk, spelling, misspelled word I noticed on page number eight, under the item was pulled for discussed at later date. That should be discussion.
Yes.
Not to be critical, but you would please correct that. Any other corrections?
Hasn't yet.
Or do I have a motion to?
Motion to approve with changes.
Second.
Have a motion to approve with the stated changes by Commissioner White, a second by Commissioner Mobley. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Next item on the agenda is public concerns and comments. So I do have one thing, and guys, tonight, I'm not a real, I have not been very good at enforcing the three-minute rule with the public, but we have a long agenda tonight with a lot of lengthy topics. So if you come to the podium tonight, if you would, please try to keep it to three minutes. I got one public comment card, so Mr. Vince Smith, I'll call you first. If there's anybody else that would like to speak after Mr. Smith, y'all come up when he's finished. Mr. Vince Smith, 9194 132nd Terrace.
Good evening.
What, naming that, well, I already said it, go ahead.
Vince Smith, 9194 132nd Street, Live Oak. I've spoken to this issue before and have prepared a couple of different versions, but finally got to a final draft on grid down, power up. It was, as I've said before, it was a Newsmax special on 6/8, and you can get it on the Internet if you want to know more details. But it really warns us about the situation we're in if the power grid goes down, because we don't have a ready backup system, and our system has not been hardened. You can live about three days without water, and there's going to head downhill real quick, and it'll probably be a criminal element that'll come in on top of that as we're more vulnerable. So this is a letter that I've previously passed out to county commissioners, and I'm requesting them, if they would be willing to look at it, if they're willing, approve it, and let's get it on. If you want to edit it, I would just like to get it out of here to alert the governor that people out here in the community do have these concerns. This community, or any community in Florida, could be a ghost town in a matter of weeks. That's how bad it is. And that is all in the Newsmax article, grid down, power up. So this is my opinion stuff. This is stuff that's on the national news, and they're saying that we've been misled and deceived pretty well for the last decade about how hard it is, because that ain't hard, and solar flares and other things can trigger it. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. I'll pass this letter down to our county attorney and let him take a look at it and see if it's something appropriate for us to forward.
Whatever y'all want to do is fine. Thank you.
Is there anyone else from the public wishing to speak tonight? Name and address for the record, please, sir.
Moses, 14581, 102nd Path, Live Oak. Consent items 3, 6, and 7. Looking over the TDC grants, I'm not sure Keith Broders, and I hadn't confirmed his concerns on that, but he says that really y'all don't have the power to give our money to those entities at all. So that's not what I'm pushing on. But one I am pushing on, if that's so, I wish I wouldn't do it. You know, I mean, the 501(c)(3)Cs and the charities and all, that's different, but the one that's receiving the most from our taxpayer funds is the music park. I know Mr. Cornet's not a pauper, and I know some paupers, I know some people that's struggling to, you know, I spoke with a person the other day, their light bill was 400 bucks, and they're going to have to cut the medication to pay the light bill, one of the two, you know what I mean? So $60,000 going to Mr. Cornet this year. Y'all, they asked for more than that, and y'all got them down to 62-something. I oppose that. And then on item number six, that boom mower, and I could be missing something here, but it's about $100,000 a year lease and about $260,000 plus whatever to buy one. I don't know. I may be missing something, but I mean, three years, we'll have $300,000 in it. You buy it for 260, and I realize that 95 lease, 95-year lease is including the maintenance and all, I hope, but still, I mean, unless you got guys out there abusing our equipment, which y'all need to get rid of them, train them right, or get rid of them if that's the case. But I just, once again, I think a purchase instead of that lease would be a better idea. And this item number seven, that MBR wastewater system, it appears that we've got a grant for that, but that's another approximate $3.5 million that we're going to have to turn over to the North Florida Water Utilities Authority. So that $20 million is pushing 25 million. So if we, if it defaults and we have to pick up that loan, that's another $3.5 million. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Anyone else from the public wishing to speak? Seeing none, I will close public comment. We're going to skip to, we have two time-specific items, item number 11 being the first one. At 5:35 PM or soon thereafter, as the matter can be heard, hold a public hearing to consider special permit request number SP-25-07-01 by DDGR-RV1 LLC requesting a special permit under section 4.4.5b 13 of the Swanee County Land Development Regulations for adding 22 sites to an existing RV parking campground on property zone A1. Mr. Meeks.
Swear affirm testimony to give the truth, hold truth, not the truth, so have the God.
I do. Mr. Chairman, board members, this application is a special permit request number SP-25-07-01. This is a special permit request to add and modify the original approved site plan for an existing RV park. The existing RV park was approved by special exception by the zoning board of adjustment in June of 2021. The original approval was for 37 sites. This requests an additional 22 sites to be added to the RV park when they bring the total to 59 sites. Zoning on the property is agricultural one, and the property is located on a 12.07 acre parcel of property. Currently, the RV park is in compliance with all the county's land use regulations that exist. They also do inspections through the Environmental Health Department and are subject to additional inspections through that entity. They have existing on-site well and septic disposal systems that service the units there, and the additional sites would require additional permitting through the Environmental Health Department for those sites. Kind of relates in that, but I'll just go ahead and mention that, that, you know, a few meetings back, I'd mentioned that August the 1st, that DEP was taking over permitting through septic. Governor's now signed the budget now, there was no funding for DEP to do that, so the Environmental Health Department will be permitting septic for at least the additional year. So this project would fall under our local permitting through our Environmental Health Department. Access is off of US 129. There's a couple uses that are accessory to the principal use that you'll notate on the site plan. They do propose to put in additional bathhouse that will be ADA compliant relating as an accessory use to the RV park. And then there's an existing mobile home that's on the property that will be relocated to another area, be repermitted and reset. The site is, like I said, serviced off existing water wells. We had made some additional changes to new RV parks and campgrounds that do not apply for expansions of existing, so that rule that's in the LDRs would exempt this RV park from having to comply with that. You have a resolution for approval in your packet if this board so chooses to approve the request, and if the board was to make the motion for denial, then the board would need to cite which specific sections of the LDRs that the application does not comply with. There's a representative from the applicant, the owner of the property that's present here tonight. If the board has any questions of them, or if you have any questions of me, we'll try to answer them. If not, I would enter the file into the record at this time.
Admitted as one.
Thank you, Mr. Meeks. Does any of the board members have any questions for Mr. Meeks or representative of the campground? Commissioner White.
Which retention pond, is it getting any bigger, or is it staying the same? The town on side?
Well, that is a Water Management District-approved retention pond. I don't know whether that would require any additional expansions from that. From my best remembrance of the original permit, that pond was permitted larger than what it was supposed to have been. They permitted that original pond as if that was going to be paved in there, and there was going to be additional impervious spaces than what actually ended up being. So the existing pond may be adequate for the stormwater runoff. If anything, it may have to be expanded, but that would be under the modification of the resource permit through the district.
Any other commissioners have any questions for Mr. Meeks?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Perkins.
So you said the system that they have there now is sufficient for what they have now, and they're going to extend. So there's any thing from the Health Department on the environmental side for that expansion?
I've had, they have, they know that they're waiting for that permit. I've had conversations with Kyle Roberts from Environmental Health. He has had conversations with the applicants, too. They're waiting for the land use approval to move forward with the applications for the septic modifications.
You good? Any other commissioners, any other questions? All right, seeing none, I will open the floor to public comment on this particular item. Is there anyone from the public wishing to speak on this item? Seeing none, I will close public comment. Anything else, Mr. Meeks?
I don't have anything to add. Mr. Browning is present, if he has anything that he feels like I've left out.
If you speak, you'll have to come up here real quick. Yes, sir. State your name and address for the record when you get there.
Hi, yes.
Over there. Yes, sir.
Robert Browning, 2451 Southeast Gulfwood Drive, Stewart, Florida. Thank you very much, appreciate it. Yes, we are expanding the pond. This pond does require expansion, and we are doing that, and it is in front of St. John's Water, excuse me, Swanee River Water, man, I do a lot there, I apologize, in front of Swanee right now, and yes, it will be modified.
Okay. Commissioner White, you good?
Oh, yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Browning, for that.
Thank you.
Does any of the commissioners have anything for Mr. Browning while he's there?
No.
I think we're good. Thank you, Mr. Browning.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir. Let's see, any other discussion, board members, or do I have a motion to approve?
I just, Mr. Chairman, just one last thing for Mr. Meeks. Mr. Meeks, we've done all our due diligence, everything falls within, because we've made changes, as you said.
Yes, sir.
Everything meets.
This is one of the first ones we've had, but yes, sir, I mean, the modifications we made to the regulations was to deal with expansions of existing parks. This is the first one that the board's had for that request.
I'll offer a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Hale. I got a motion to approve by Commissioner Hale.
Second.
A second by Commissioner White. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. We will close that one and move to item number 12, is also time-specific. At 5:35 PM or soon thereafter, as the matter can be heard, hold a public hearing to consider the enactment of an ordinance outlawing the dumping of human waste, authorizing civil penalties for violations of certain county ordinances or codes, establishing civil penalties for violations of certain county ordinances or codes, establishing procedures for contesting citations, establishing an effective date, and repealing all ordinances in conflict here within. Mr. Morrison.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Last year, the board, after speaking with Mr. Crespo, instructed me to move forward with trying to get an ordinance to authorize ticketing for the violations of human, for human waste continuing to be dumped here in the county, and it's being, the proof of that is that the increasing rate of fecal matter being found in Swanee County's waters. So that ended up being a little bit more complicated than I anticipated. The first issue was there's an issue of preemption because check Fuller Statute 43413 deals specifically with this. The second issue, which held me up for a while, is the fact that the county has specifically been dealing with violations of ordinances or codes through a special magistrate system, and so establishing a ticketing system is a separate track of enforcement, and so I wanted to look into having dual tracks of enforcement. So anyhow, we've gotten it done now, so what this ordinance does, Mr. Chairman, is three things. The first thing it does is it authorizes all Swanee County employees to be deputized under Florida Statute 434137 to enforce that statute's prohibitions on the dumping of human waste. And specifically, the statute only deals with the dumping of human waste from vehicles, vessels, or other such methods or other such structures. Our ordinance here is more expansive, and what it does is it outlaws the dumping of human waste anywhere within the territorial boundaries of Swanee County, including all private or public land, including all waterways within Swanee County. The other thing that it does is it sets up a system, a dual enforcement system of, and it creates a statutorily valid form of citation issuing for purposes of enforcement of codes or ordinances, and so that's what the second part of this goes through. And it's, as you can see, it's rather significant in terms of length. It gives all of the appropriate due process violations to proposed violators, sets up a mechanism of contesting that civil infraction through the county court. We have spoken with Judge Griffin to ensure that this is something that she wants to, that her office is okay with handling. She indicated that it was. Then you'll see at the end that enforcement through civil citation is going to be limited to this human waste ordinance, and then also violations of the ordinances relating to public nudity and collection and disposal of solid waste in going through our ordinances and drafting this one. Previous boards have authorized a ticketing system specifically for public nudity and collection and disposal of solid waste, but the way those ticketing systems were set up did not comply with the current requirements for due process. So functionally, this ordinance overrules those, establishes a uniform ticketing citation system and a mechanism for enforcement within due process. One thing, Mr. Chairman, which I would point out, is a proposed change. If you go to page two, I'm sorry, page three, section 52-34, where it says dumping of human waste is prohibited, the draft that went out in the agenda said it is unlawful for any person to knowingly, intentionally, recklessly, or negligently dump human waste anywhere, including but not limited to any body of water or any private or publicly-owned land. I wrote that expansively on purpose, but it's a little too expansive, because technically every time you flushed your toilet, you'd be violating the statute. So the amendment, which would get signed by, which I would recommend gets signed by the board, states, adds a preamble to that. It says, unless otherwise authorized by law, it is unlawful for any person to knowingly, intentionally, recklessly, or negligently dump human waste, and the rest of the ordinance continues on. So that's what the statute does. My apologies to the board for it taking so long to get done, but I think this will satisfy any due process issues, as well as give Mr. Crespo a much-needed mechanism of enforcement, so there would be immediate enforcement if you find somebody dumping human waste here in the county. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Any other questions for Mr. Morrison in regards to that ordinance? Seeing none, I'll open the floor to public comment. Anyone from the public wishing to speak on this particular item?
Still Moses, 14581, 102nd Path, Live Oak. Only because it's been a legal document written up, and I read it just like, I think the way it's worded, it says anywhere in the county, territorial county, private or public.
Yes.
So basically, what's that saying is I can't relieve myself off my own porch. If Mr. Crespo's got that drone going over and he catches me, he could cite me 500 bucks for doing something that, you know, and so many farmers out in the field, they don't want to go back to the, wherever, and, you know, I believe there needs to be more of an exception put in there for that reason. And I'm not wrong about that, am I?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I don't, this is one of those things that come to a matter of the discretion of the officer. As a practical matter, I don't think it would come up. If you start creating exceptions for when it'll be okay, then you can create exceptions that swallow the rule. So the goal here would be to maximize the discretion given to Mr. Crespo. Nobody's planning on being a Peep and Tom in anybody's backyard, it's simply to give Mr. Crespo, because it can take various forms. If people are using an RV and they're dumping through their RV, if they're putting it in a bucket and dumping it in a bucket, or sending people out into the backyard, you know, there's degrees of this, but it is a consistent and growing problem. So yes, it's written expansively. It does apply to the public and private grounds, as the statute does, and candidly, the way the current statute which prohibits human waste dumping would prohibit you from doing that from a vessel structure or whatever, just standing outside and urinating from your porch. So this just says the same thing, but to the grounds as a whole.
And the entire staff has been deputized or whatever, sworn in, so I just, that's a mistake, guys. I mean, we talking about gaining our rights back, not having more, and trust me, I'm 100% against people dumping, although it's kind of profitable. I don't want to see, I want my water clean, man. I got Aquaphor Clean Water, and I run a filter on it even, you know, so I want clean water. But I'm telling you, this is a rights issue, and it could even come up with civil rights, you know, so you, y'all ain't old enough yet, but you're going down the road, and when you got to go, sometimes you got to go, so.
Anyone else wishing to speak in regards to this item? Mr. Meeks, you here to speak?
Still Ronald Meeks. I think it was said correctly, we're going to use good common sense in our approach to this. When we looked at this, this conversation goes back and back, you know, we've had several things and incidents that's happened north of us that's increased nitrate levels in our Swanee River that we're not, no one here is happy about, we want clean water. Mr. Crespo has some of the actual data and analysis from the limited-use wells where the testing has happened. I think when we started this conversation in '21, that number was 4%. In '22, that number had increased to like 23%. We're up to 31% now. So I like the language, I like that it's forceful. I want the word to be on the streets and the public that you don't dump your waste in Swanee County. I don't have a problem with that. That's, I think that's a good stance and approach to be. I think it's very important, it's very important to me, I think it's very important to this board, I think it's very important to the people of Swanee County, that we protect our water, and that's the whole intent behind it.
Thank you, Mr. Meeks. Yes, sir, name and address for the record.
Eric K. Weaver, Jr., citizen of Swanee County, 65 years, 8962 County Road 136A. Contrary to popular belief, Wayne, Florida Highway Patrol troopers do more than just write speeding tickets. I probably made one of the first environmental cases the Florida Highway Patrol ever made in Seminole County, and I think this statute is aimed more at this. Honey wagon, commercial enterprise, 1,400 gallons, opened the valve, he didn't have time to go dump it correctly, and drove down a county road dumping human waste. That's a felony. I made that case. I think this is more what that's aimed at.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver. Anyone else from the public wishing to speak on this item? Seeing none, I will close public comment. Any board discussion on the matter, or do I have a motion to adopt the ordinance?
Well, I just want to feel assured that with Mr.
Speaking to the mic, Commissioner.
Mr. Meeks has, you know, brought out that, you know, they're deputized, they're not going to go out there hunting folks to, yes, say, were you out there taking a leap and going to, you know, citation, give you a citation or something, but we do need some sternness to make sure it doesn't happen. We've had it happen before with some illegal dumping, dumping some stuff, and have a lot of people come in with campers and stuff, we don't want that to happen. So I'm going to agree with, need to have some sternness to make sure it's don't happen.
Right, I would agree with that, and, I mean, Mr. Klepper, I take your point. I understand where you're coming from, but I know Mr. Crespo, and no pun intended, but he's got bigger things to look for. So, anyway, he's got bigger problems. But any other board discussion?
That was one of the first things I asked the attorney about, was when he, before Mr. Klepper came up, I asked him, I said, what about if I want to take out, you know, outside there, dwell in and do that, then? He said, you know, that's, it don't apply to that, you know what I'm saying?
Yes, sir, Commissioner Mobley.
So if there is campers, sometimes at Walmart, people stay in and move their homes, do we have something set up in Swanee County where they have a dump station to actually go to and empty their camper? Do we have some?
Busy Bee.
Busy Bee? Okay. Busy Bee has a dump station. Okay. Thank you.
Any other board discussion? Or do I have a motion to approve the ordinance?
Motion to approve.
A motion to approve by Commissioner White, who was my second, second by Commissioner Perkins. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Where were we? Proclamations and presentations, next item on the agenda. Do we have any proclamations or presentations? I know that we do, but it's an additional agenda item. Is the mayor here, or anyone from the city?
City.
Okay, I want to, I want to, should I jump to this one, or just?
Go ahead.
It's a proclamation and a presentation, so there's four just additional, there's four additional agenda items, but the first one is adoption of a joint proclamation with the City of Live Oak honoring Swanee County Purple Heart recipients. I'm going to read this proclamation really quick. It says, "A joint proclamation, City of Live Oak and Swanee County honoring Swanee County Purple Heart recipients. Whereas the Purple Heart is a U.S. Military Declaration awarded in the name of the President to those wounded or killed while serving in the U.S. Military on or after April 5th, 1917, and whereas there are soldiers who were awarded the Purple Heart in America's many wars who were from Live Oak and Swanee County, and whereas there are a number of veterans who received the Purple Heart who are presently residing in Live Oak and Swanee County, and whereas the citizens of Live Oak and Swanee County are thankful for these recipients and want to honor them, and whereas it is appropriate and fitting that the mayor and Live Oak City Council and the Swanee County Commission recognize these individuals on this special day, and whereas the courage, honor, sacrifice, and dedication which these recipients displayed during their service for their country in the cause of justice, freedom, and democracy are worthy of recognition." are worthy of recognition. Now therefore, I Frank C. Davis, Mayor of the City of Live Oak and the Live Oak City Council and the Swanee County Board of County Commissioners do hereby publicly recognize and commend the Purple Heart recipients of Live Oak and Swanee County and thank them for their service and commitment to their community and country on this July 4, 2025." This is a proclamation, I think, that they're going to make a presentation on, on Friday. I think the ceremony starts around 6:30, 6 o'clock, 6:30. Any questions, comments? Or do I have a motion to adopt that proclamation, joint proclamation?
Move.
Have a motion by Commissioner Perkins?
Second.
I'm going to go with Mobley.
That's fine.
I think it's quick, people's first. Second by Commissioner Mobley. All in favor? Aye. Aye. All opposed? Same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Consent agenda items. I'm going to pull number seven just for some clarification with our county attorney. So, that leaves two, three, four, five, six, eight, nine, 10.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to pull item number six.
Number six.
Just for some clarification.
Okay, so that leaves two, three, four, five, eight, nine, 10. Any questions, comments concerned on those items? Or do I have a motion to approve?
So, move.
Have a motion by Commissioner Hale to approve those items. A second by Commissioner Perkins. All in favor? Aye. Aye. All opposed? Same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Item number six, Commissioner White.
Mr. Scott, I guess, is directed, did you, what's the warranty on that piece of equipment? Do you have any idea?
I do not know. Probably in the back of documentation.
I looked through it. I didn't see, I didn't see where it stated what it was and I'm not sure if it's covered under the lease. The only reason I ask is so that's, that's a piece of equipment that's probably going to get beat up on pretty bad. So, that's why I was asking on the, on the warranty part of it. Is it covered through the whole part of the lease? Is it not? If you don't have answers, that's, that's okay. I mean, I just, I'd like to know that.
I'll, I'll double check and follow up with you on that.
I hear where you're going with that and I, I heard what Mr. Klepper said as well. And I had put some thought into that too, a little bit. And my thought process was, this is the first one Swanee County's had that I'm aware of. So, my thought process was is, hey, let's, let's maybe lease this to see how much ground it covers, how, how well it does, how durable it is on the first one. And if our guys say, hey, this is the way to go, then yeah, Mr. Klepper, maybe we look at purchasing these. But I hate to go out there and buy a $262,000 piece of equipment and in six months, our guys say, this ain't the way, we need to keep doing the way we're doing it. And now we kind of married to it.
I'm fine with the lease. I just, I just think there's going to probably be, and I might be wrong, but I think there's probably going to be a lot of maintenance, so that's.
Mr. Morrison?
Yes, sir.
Without having that information here tonight, would we be able to approve this agenda item contingent upon our vice chair giving approval on the warranty?
For number seven?
Number six.
For six. I think that'd be fine.
You good with that?
Yes, sir.
Additionally, we went and looked at the one in Columbia County, the ones that they use, that's where they're going to. And we liked them, they liked them a whole lot. So, we'll follow up on the warranty on that.
I've talked to them before, I've seen it over there long before now. I always wanted one. I always wanted to try one. And when they came to me and asked me about it, I was like, yeah, I was, yeah, I think that's a good idea.
Right. I agree with.
Mr. Chairman.
I'm sorry. Commissioner Hale, hold on, I'll come back to you. Commissioner Hale?
I was just going to say, I agree with you. I mean, we have it on one of these and this thing's not mowing a hayfield, you know? I mean, it's being used in a, a lot of probably ditches and overgrown areas and things of that nature. So, as long as it carries the warranty like Commissioner White's discussing during the lease of it, I don't have a problem with that.
Okay. Commissioner Perkins?
Speaking with some of the, the men out there, they're excited about getting this mow max to be more with, they're maybe do, cover more grounds and maybe get in closer areas like where we're spraying now. And there's a lot of slack coming from homeowners because those that are out there doing things organically, don't like the spray, they're being sprayed around, they're proper, you have to add some before you spray. So, this mow max would help cut out a lot of that, what hearing from supervisors that's out there that's, oh, they're mowing crew. So, they're excited about it. They actually wanting to get more of them to maybe help them to get more done. And that would be, you know, take a lot of, so, so they're excited about it as well. So, I think it'd be good to get it.
Yeah, I think it's worth trying. I think, you know, maybe leasing's the first way to go until we make sure that that's what our guys want to do and then we can look at.
And hopefully, you know, we're, whereas, as Scott was, like 200 something thousand for spraying.
We had budgeted two and change, I think it's 250, I think, roughly.
And if we can, you know, there's more, 200 something, we can save that on, you know, more versus you in the spraying, if that would cover the thing, that's, that'd be the ticket thing to do rather than having to do the spraying.
Right. Really think the mowing will do a better job too. I mean, it'll last longer.
Sure. That's right. And you have that brown vegetation that's out there standing, that'd be mowed down and looking nice and neat. So, I think the mow max is the way to go.
Yeah, and you know, it's just a, it's a, I agree with everything you said and I don't disagree with anything you said. The, the problem that I see that we run into sometimes is, well, number one, it only takes money to fix all these problems, right? More men, more mowers, more money. But with the herbicide, yes, a fine line on who's doing organic farming and whatnot, but on our dirt roads and at some of our intersections, what I like about the herbicide is it'll, it buys us so much more time than just trimming them back. But there's liability there, just like you said. So, if someone's growing something or has an organic nursery or farm right there and then that herbicide drifts over, then, you know, there's liability to us. But I, that's a lawyer question. So, I think the herbicide applications are, are good where we can use them, only because it keeps that vegetation beat back a lot longer than versus having to come back and mow it again with the amount of miles we got. But nonetheless, very good point.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
The only thing I would add, if the board's going to make it contingent to Commissioner White's approval of the warranty, is that as soon as practicable, after that's done, that Commissioner White sent an email to staff so staff can get that incorporated into the minutes for the meeting. So, that way there's, we can show that board action is appropriate then.
Okay. So, what you need is approval contingent on Commissioner White's comfort level on the warranty. And then once he's comfortable, he needs to send that email in writing so that they could document that and put it in public record.
Yes, sir.
That he authorized it.
Yes, sir.
You good with that?
Yes, sir.
So, do I have a motion so stated?
So, move.
Have a motion by Commissioner White, second by Commissioner Mobley. All in favor? Aye. Aye. All opposed? Same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Item number seven was the approval of contract with Veolia. I, I think I'm saying that right, for the wastewater treatment stuff. My question, Mr. Morrison, that agenda item has a lot of stuff in here. I know I've spoke to North Florida Professional Services. I've also spoke to the contractor that the county uses for wastewater treatment plants. They are both very familiar with this company. They've been around a long time. They do a lot of these across the country, very well established, no concerns of the equipment whatsoever. So, I don't have any concerns there. But in all of these Ts and Is, will you just please make sure that all these are dotted and signed correctly because that's a lot of money?
It is, Mr. Chairman. And the nature of how it's set up, it's an acceptance of a proposal. The big thing that'll go along with it is an addendum which incorporates the normal sewers in Swanee County, that sort of thing. So, but that'll go along with it.
Okay. Yep. Ms. Humphries, you good with that?
Okay. Ms. Humphries is with North Florida Professional Services. That's all I had.
Yes, sir.
I can't offer a motion, but I'm good.
But.
Any other questions, comments on number seven?
I don't speak wastewater treatment plant either, Mr. Chairman.
Sir?
I don't speak wastewater treatment plant either.
Okay. Or do I have a motion to approve?
So, move.
A motion by Commissioner Perkins to approve.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hale. All in favor? Aye. Aye. All opposed? Same sign. Motion carries five to zero. We've done 11 and 12 constitutional officers. Are any constitutional officers present wishing to speak? Seeing none, staff. Any staff members present wishing to speak? None. Commissioner items? Any commissioner items? None. County attorney items? Mr. Morrison?
Nothing.
Geez. Consultant, any consultants present wishing to speak? General business, item number 13. Discuss with possible board action the applicants of the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, in the housing rehabilitation category and possible conflicts of interest. Mr. Fred Fox. Name and address for the record, please, sir.
Good evening. I'm David Fox of Fred Fox Enterprise. Do you need my street address or is that?
I, I think they know who you are.
Okay. The county got funded, or is funded for a $750,000 community development block grant in the housing rehabilitation category. You're under contract with Florida Commerce for these funds. The county, or we have completed the environmental, initial environmental review for the project. The county has advertised for clients, for people interested in getting their house remodeled or rehabbed or placed under this program. It is for only owner occupied low to moderate income households. You took applications. We got in place, you had a citizen advisory task force, but it didn't meet the current criteria. So, you had to get a new CATF or citizen advisory task force in place and you've met that criteria. The CATF has met. We've reviewed, everybody's completed a conflict of interest packet, including the board of county commissioners, employees with the county that are applicable to the program, and the citizen advisory task force members. There were no conflicts of interest and they also did a ranking criteria based on your housing assistance plan. When you applied, you submitted, they call it housing assistance plan, which is your guidelines for the program. Under those guidelines, when you got applications in or intake applications, you had a ranking process. The ranking process included households, the first homes to be addressed will be households with incomes 30% of area median or less. And under that category, you'd do ranking based on disability or handicapped head of household, head of household over 62 years of age, households with large family, five or more, then households with small families, four or less. Once you address everybody under that 30% category, you would move down to households with incomes between 31% of area median and 50% of area median. First ones under that category to be addressed will be disabled or handicapped head of households, head of households over 62 years of age, households with large family, and households with small family, four or less. Once you address everybody under 50%, then you would move down to households between 51% of area median and the maximum income allowed of 80% of area median. And you would do the same thing again. You would do disabled or handicapped head of household, head of households over 62, households with large family, and households with small family. We provided and the CATF reviewed a ranking sheet based on those item category, category items. The more they fell under, the higher chance they had of getting ranked in the process. The ranking came in as follows. Number one, Audrey Green, 3249 161st Road, Live Oak. Number two, Thomas Taylor, 9903 134 Terrace, Live Oak. Number three, Pamela Joseph, 7731 86th Street, Live Oak. Number four, Mary C. Smith, 14353 120th Street, Live Oak. Number five, Christopher Smith, 1902, 1922 81st Road, McAlpin. Number six, Cynthia Worthy, 12707 Railroad Street, Live Oak. Number seven, Amy Coon, 6655 175th Drive, Live Oak. Number eight, Gina Kelly, Gina Kelly, 1644 139th Drive, Live Oak. Number nine, Ronald Fisher, 11431 145th Road, Live Oak. Number 10, Rolando Rodriguez, 7739 Railroad Street, Live Oak. Number 11, Louise Sheffield, 10420 201, 201st Street, Road, or 201st Road, Live Oak. Number 12, Vicki Stout, 10884 129th Road, Live Oak. Number 13, Dorothy Vaughn, 18271 91st Road, McAlpin. Number 14, Alma Menendez, 19460 107th Drive, O'Brien. Number 15, Tiffany Gaminas, 14213 225th Road, Live Oak. Number 16, Tina Strickland, 12938 92nd Street, Live Oak. Number 17, Michelle Jones, 10973 110th Terrace, Live Oak. And then if you address all those homes, there was an alternate that came in at the end, they would be dressed last. And that's Warren Sheffield III, 10420 201st Road, Live Oak. So, what this ranking does is give you priority to start going down the list and utilizing the funds for bidding out and qualifying. The only thing that would change this ranking would be if their income has changed and they no longer meet that criteria. Or if the houses, let's say that the first, in this case, the first three or four are mobile homes and under your HAP, you can't repair a mobile home, you either have to replace it or not address it at all. So, you're doing replacement homes for the first three or four. So, maybe number 10 is a minor rehab. You have a little bit of funds left that you can address a minor rehab. You may move down to number 10, but that'd be the only reason why, that you would skip other people is because you only have limited funds remaining. The CATF recommended to the board the approval of this housing, a ranking under the CDBG program. Not to answer questions you have.
Any commissioners have any questions for Mr. Fox?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins?
Mr. Fox, I mean, how's your, your replacement homes?
Under the, the first four, I have to look at back through my list. The first home is a mobile home, so it's going to be a replacement. Number two is going to be a major rehab, possibly a replacement. Number three, a replacement. Number four, once again, is a mobile home, so it has to be replaced or addressed. Number five is a mobile home. Six is a, is a mobile home. Seven is a mobile home. So, at least when you get to seven, which you probably utilize all your funds by that point, because you've got so many replacements. But the mobile homes, either we, like I said, we can either address it based on your HAP to replace it, demo and build a new site-built home, or we don't address it at all. We can't rehab it. Does that answer your question or?
Yes. Those, those new homes, replacement homes, what is the square footage of?
Two-bedroom is 900 square foot, two-bedroom, one-bath block. And a three-bedroom, three, 3-1 block is 1,000 square foot. And the amount, so it'd be bid out. We don't have an exact amount right now. We're in the process of getting title companies quotes and quotes for asbestos inspections. We have to do asbestos inspection as part of the environmental site specific for each one. Even if it's a rehab, if it's built before 1978 and we're going to rehab, we have to do a lead-based paint inspection. And then now they requiring, the new category they're requiring is radon inspections. So, now we're getting quotes for radon inspections. Once we get that data, then I can actually finish the specs and vet it out. Probably looking at me going to bid on the first group in 60 days.
You good, Commissioner Perkins? Any other questions for Mr. Fox? Or do I have a motion to approve?
So, move.
So, I have a motion by Commissioner Perkins?
I see.
A second by Commissioner Mobley. All in favor? Aye. Aye. All opposed? Same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Thank you, Mr. Fox.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
I think that's your only agenda item, so I know you don't live locally, right? I don't think you live locally, so if...
No, I'm going to head on if that's all right.
Yes, sir. No disrespect.
Have a good evening.
Yes, sir. Number 14, discuss with possible board action the determination of rates for the fire protection assessment program for fiscal year 2025-2026. Chief Miller.
Good evening, Board. We had our, gave our presentation last board meeting. Just wanted to give you an update. I submitted the safer application today. So that is in review now with FEMA. And I am here before you to, to ask for the second part of my presentation last, last meeting on the, the $31 increase in the fire assessment, which is abruptly 25% increase in that category, which would subsequently be a 25% increase in each one of the fire assessment categories. And answer any questions you might have.
Chief, so you and I have had discussion about this. I've had discussion with Mr. Morrison. So, and Board, I want to make sure y'all know where I'm going with this in the ordinance, Mr. Morrison. But Chief, as we have talked about in 2022, 2024, that addition to the vacant land tax.
They've been doing it.
Okay. So there's a problem that I foresee with homestead properties. Chief, you're well aware of this. I'm going to tell the other board members and make sure that they're aware of this, and then the public too. So somewhere along the lines, the county started assessing homestead property. If you live on more than 5.1 acres, you are paying a vacant land fire assessment. I've told you my... In addition to your residential fire assessment. I have a problem with that. I think that that's, I think that's wrong. I do believe that I was on the board when that slipped by me, so I'm a little angry with myself that I let that happen. I think we've talked about that in a previous board meeting. I've talked to the tax collector, I've talked to, I've talked to you, I've talked to the property appraiser. I think that taking that vacant land fire assessment off of those homesteaded properties that are between 5 and 160, 160 because the Florida statute only allows you to homestead up to 160 acres. I think we're hitting those people twice. I just don't think that's right. I think that if, if you live in a home on 5.0 acres, you're paying the residential fire assessment. If you live on a home in 5.25 acres, you're paying another $23 in a vacant land. What's the dang difference? So where I'm going with that is, is the removal of that vacant land fire assessment from, there's a little bit of discrepancies, but it's going to be somewhere, worst case scenario, $100,000 out of your budget. Best case scenario, $50,000 out of your budget. In my opinion, it's not a lot of money, but we're taxing the people, the homesteaders, twice. So if, I want that out of there. I just want you to make sure that if I get what I want and take that out and we come time to pass the ordinance that you have enough in your fire assessment. In other words, I don't want to send your budget into disarray because of me thinking that, I don't want that, taking that double taxation off.
Yeah, no, I agree 100% with you in that they should not be taxed twice like that. So we will make it happen.
It just rubs me wrong that we're doing that to those properties, and I want to see that taken off. But I also don't want it to send you into a tailspin because I did that to you.
No problem.
I'll just say, Mr. Chairman, I agree. I think I also have had these conversations with everyone you mentioned as well. I believe it's the same when we're talking about even hit some of the churches vacant land and things of that nature.
We've cleaned, we've cleaned that part up.
Yes. We did, but then this part's still left out. But, and Chief, I think you and I spoke about this.
Yep.
Is this, and I'm not staff at the time, I only think staff, that particular staff member's still here. But I was just told that was because of the people we hired to do that assessment for us, or that study for us, I see, not assessment, that study for us.
I think the way the study was done and the way it was worded is how it got in there.
Okay.
So, like I've, I've mentioned to you in my budget coming up, I'm, I want a new study. I'm going to try to budget for a new study. And get a better way, at least be able to present y'all and the citizens with a, a better way, a more clear way of how to fund fire and EMS to where it's, it's more transparent and they see exactly where the money's coming from, so.
Well, I'd say with the chairman on this one, because let's say it's something, me and you both were on that board. Me and you both were on the board at that time, and it got passed both of us, so I want to clean that up too, please.
Yeah, I just, I mean, I just think it's the right thing to do. Any other commissioners have any problem or don't explain what we're trying to do with taking that vacant land fire off of homesteaded properties that are already paying a residential fire assessment? Y'all get it?
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just clean up one thing in terms of the acreage and how it will be worded in the proposed resolution. Making it between the, making it so it's understandable to cap it at 160, didn't it make, it becomes very difficult to, to word it that way. And speaking with Mr. Gamble, as a practical matter, once land gets over the 160, it's going to be exempt ag anyway in terms of actual properties in Swanee County. So the proposed ordinance, as I've written it, just says, if it's homesteaded real property, we're not putting another one on it. It doesn't have that 160 cap, which I know reflects the constitutional limits on homestead. But as a practical matter, it doesn't matter for Swanee County.
Yeah, I mean, if it has to be written that way, I don't think there are a lot of homesteads out there that are on homesteaded over 160. There's some.
And those that are over 160 are also going to be ag once they get over that 160, so it's exempt no matter what.
I would assume so, yeah. So back to your question, so now you're talking about you're wanting to set your preliminary rate at, it's currently 100...
Currently at 120.
120, you're wanting to go to $151, which is a $31 increase. The last increase of, when, what year was that? We went to 120 from, was 100?
I believe it was 2020.
2020 or 2021?
I think 2020 or 21 right in there was when it went from 100 to 120.
And for the public state or sake, this is just a preliminary. We're not setting the fire assessment tonight. So how this works, for those that may not know, we set the preliminary rate tonight. We can always come down below that between now and the time we actually set the rate. So if we set it, the preliminary rate at 151 tonight, that doesn't mean it's going to be $151 papers. It, it could be, it could stay at 120. It could, we will vote at that, vote on that at a later date. It could go to 130. It could go to anything up to $151.
Yes.
So tonight, we're just setting the cap, if you will, in between now and the deadline to set the actual fire assessment rate. And it's all the ways that we're going to do next, we will vote on what the actual rate will be.
Right.
Just putting out, out there in newspapers. Preliminary.
And the public.
And, well, yeah.
And the public.
Their liaison to the public.
Right.
Any questions, comments for the fire chief? Suggestions or motions to approve the preliminary rate as proposed?
Yeah, I'm like, go ahead.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner White. Mr. Hale, bring it to the second. I have a second by Commissioner Hale. All in favor, aye? Aye. All opposed, same sign? Motion carries five to zero. Next item on the agenda is item number 15, discussion, discussion, or discuss. Discuss with possible board action, determination of rates for the solid waste assessment program for fiscal year 2025-2026. Mr. Greg Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Board, the current rate for solid waste assessment is $235 per household. With those numbers, it would take us about $60 per household in addition to cover all the costs. As you're aware, anything that's not covered through assessments, we have to pick up through the general revenue. Currently, there's 17,668 resident or households in Swanee County. Our recommendation is to increase the fee by $30, bring the, the total up to $265 per residence. This would offset about half of what we're paying out of general revenue. As you're aware, we're working on some cost saving measures and different techniques and trying to collect and dispose of the solid waste. We hope we can start addressing that within the, in the coming year and fall, in future years. So our recommendation, not to do the full 60, only do half that to the 30. And again, as the chairman mentioned, with a fire, you, you set the rate, you can always come down at the budget hearings to adjust that if you wish.
Any questions for Mr. Scott in regards to this? Again, as you just said, as I said earlier, this is just preliminary, this, we're not setting it tonight. Preliminary cap. Questions, comments, concerns? And I do know that we are working hard on some alternative measures to try to reduce our solid waste bill. But this garbage thing's not going away, folks, um, you know. And I'll say it tonight, nobody wants to talk about a landfill because nobody wants a landfill in their backyard. But the folks that own the landfill that is in somebody's backyard controls our destiny on what we pay to take our garbage. That's, that's just the way it is. So we're at their mercy on what they charge us by the ton to take our garbage. Because we don't have our own landfill here, which is, whether you're for or against it, doesn't matter, that's just a fact.
Mr. Chairman, we've been, all of us have been looking at other ways to streamline it, maximize it, and get it down to where, and save the taxpayers as much money as we can, and then that's what we're working on now. And hence why we're not doing it over $60. It is what it is.
So do I have a motion to set the preliminary rate at, what did you say, 265?
265, correct.
Crickets. A motion, I thought, a motion by Commissioner White, second, I think Hale got you.
Good.
Second on Commissioner Hale. All in favor, aye? Aye. All opposed, same sign? Motion carries five to zero on that preliminary rate.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Next item on the agenda, item number 16, additional agenda items. We have three left. They are, item number two, approval of traffic signal maintenance and compensation agreement with the Florida Department of Transportation and adoption of enabling resolution. I don't, they don't have nobody's name beside it. Who's talking to that?
I will. That's a housekeeping item, Mr. Chairman. We do this every year. We are, I was out at Public Works this morning. We do have a, some, some men that were getting trained today to do the, a lot of the repairs ourself. But the motion to approve, I mean, a recommendation is to approve.
Any questions for Mr. Scott? Or do I have a motion to... Thank you, Commissioner Hale. Motion by Commissioner Hale to approve, second by Commissioner Perkins. All in favor, aye? Aye. All opposed, same sign? Motion carries five to zero. Item number three, approval of amended year one funding agreement for the public safety and string point P S A. Update project D M S dash P 1 dash 2, 5 dash 0, 7 dash 3, 3 between the state of Florida D M S and Swanee County. Budget impact payment will be made with 911 carryover forward funds. Who's speaking to that? I'm going to assume you. Welcome.
Welcome to the party.
So y'all approved this back on May 20th. And after it was fully executed, the state realized that the project end date was June 30th, 2025, and it should have been 2026. So rather than an amendment, they decided just to redo the whole agreement. So that's literally the only two changes. The...
We're reapproving something we've already approved based on that.
Date.
Date change.
It has the date and the agreement number were the only two changes.
Fair enough. Thank you, Ms. Payne.
Thank you.
Yep. Any questions, comments for her before she leaves? Do I have a motion to approve? Is it you? A motion to approve by Commissioner Perkins? Second by Commissioner Mobley. All in favor, aye? Aye. All opposed, same sign? Motion carries five to zero. Next one, item number four, is chairman's concerns regarding sheriff's, sheriff's audits. So let me say this. This is not enjoyable. This is not fun. I didn't sign up for this. I don't like this. I don't like doing this. But we're here. And I'm going to read this here in just a minute. But what I will say is, Thomas Jefferson said this. Obviously, I've been doing some soul searching. But Thomas Jefferson said, "In matters of style, swim with the current. In matters of principle, stand like a rock." Today, guys, I'm asking this board to stand like a rock. We should address some concerns with the finances at the E O C and the finances at the sheriff's office. And I'm going to read these concerns to you so that I don't mess them up. This is in the agenda packet. Item number one, "I believe that ensuring the safety of all, of our citizens, our next most important obligation is to prop, is to be proper steward of taxpayer funds. Further, as an elected official, we are properly held to account if Swanee County mismanages its public funds. It is in the vein that I submit this additional agenda item. Last week, I received information from Powell &amp; Jones, C P A, that our annual independent audit is statutorily due by July the 1st, 2025. They further informed me that they have not begun the audit because the sheriff's office has yet to supply any of the requested audit documentation. In January, the sheriff, as well as the other constitutional officers, assured the board of county commissioners and clerk that their paperwork would be submitted by March the 1st to ensure timely compliance. I also received information that the audit of the emergency operations center by Cherry Beckett was at a standstill due to the sheriff's office refusal or inability to provide requested information. The county attorney obtained a spreadsheet of the requests to the sheriff's office that remained unfulfilled. As chairman, it is my obligation to bring this information to the rest of the board. Due to sunshine laws, the only means for me to, to discuss this information when the board is in a public meeting. At my instruction, the county attorney has prepared correspondence to the sheriff's office, which details the current situations and contains what I believe should be the appropriate response from this board. Members of the board, please review the attached correspondence and be prepared to discuss what is an appropriate response from the board." Travis Land, chairman. So guys, Sheriff, I see you. I'll get to you in just a second. As I stated, this isn't fun. We both have friends on both side of, both sides of this issue. It's not popular. This isn't personal. It's not an attack on anyone or any office. But at the end of the day, every single dime that comes into this county is taxpayer dollars. And I want to know where they go and how they went. That's all I want to know. And refusal to talk about it, or to say it's restricted, or we can't, or we're not, that's, that's not acceptable to me because it's not my money. It's theirs. And I'm responsible for it, as well as you, as well as Mr. Baker, as well as Mr. Gamble, Jordan, Kinsey, all of our constitutionals. So that's all I'm after, is to figure this out. There's a spreadsheet here that shows what was requested, what was refused, what was stated. Tell us why you need it and we'll give it back, or we may give it to you. There's a, you know, there's, there's, there's documents in here that, that state the sheriff says, no, you're not, you know, you're not talking to this person or that person. So I have two letters in here. One addresses our annual audit, which is statutorily, we do this every single year. By the third, and we're required by Florida statute to do that. Statutorily, it's due today. In Tallahassee, they have not started it yet because our annual financials have not been turned in to them, which is done every year by the sheriff. That's the only constitutional they do not have. The second letter in here, guys, is addressing the Cherry Beckett audit, which as I stated in the paper, is currently at a standstill. They're requesting information that apparently is being refused to be handed over by the sheriff. So Sheriff St. John, I see you. I recognize you at the podium.
I want to start with the sheriff's audit first, and then I'm going to have Heather Henderson come up here and address the E O C stuff. But here again, I apologize for, you know, being late to you and into the public about the audit here. But, but let me explain to you about, you know, some of the, some of the hurdles that we had to go through. And this, hopefully this will make, make sense to everybody about what's happening, where we're at. Back in 10, 1 of 23, I had a change of finance director at Swanee County Sheriff's Office, Ms. Corbin. And then she, she is, she's no longer with the sheriff's office because she stepped down on, on January 6th of '25. During that time period, you know, I think, I did realize that, I think that she was maybe a little above her head on, on the, on the finance part with the sheriff's office. Plus you throw in May 10th to '24, we had North Florida tornadoes. August 5th to '24, we had Hurricane Debbie. September 26th, '24, we had Helane. And October 9th, we had Milton. So you throw in three hurricanes, the tornadoes, and all the stuff here, I think she just become overwhelmed. I realized that, and realized that, you know, we had some issues. So at that point in time, I removed her and I put it back in, in there, Michelle Emmons. Now, Michelle Emmons is, you know, she's worked with the finance with me for about six, seven years now, and never had an issue like we have right now. But then, when, when Michelle took over, there was, there was a lot of, a lot of stuff that we had, that Michelle and actually had the payroll personnel helped Michelle, and also the, the art people were also helping Michelle to get this thing because we realized we had, we had to do a lot, a lot of research as far as, you know, going back. And, and the biggest part was the reconciliation of the bank records to our, to our budget. I want to, you know, today, we have, we've got all them done. We had to go from, for the last, last year, and, and we've got them done today. So one thing that we've got to do, Chairman, is to give the, the auditors, you know, different, different reports that we, that's already there. We just got to print them out and hand it to them. So basically, the audit is done today. Here again, I apologize for being, for being late, but the audit is done. Everything seemed to be on, on track with it all. So that, that's, that's kind of a, kind of a short scenario of why this thing has, has, we got, we run a little short on, on time with it because of, you know, of trying to go, go back and, and just research. Because I guess the biggest, the best way I know to explain it is, would be is, is that we had to put all the, the, the deposits, all the cash checks and all the return checks, all in the right columns, you know. It was kind of... It was kind of all over the place. We just had to make sure they were in the right place so it would make sense to auditors. And we have done that, and we've completed today. Another thing, another issue that we had was that ADG reconciliation module was not performed correctly. The finance director is working with ADG to solve this problem. So not only did we have to go back, you know, for a year's time, the ADG that we was using was not working properly, and every time we tried to pull something up, it didn't have the correct information. That was found out, and then, you know, so that's been solved. So that was another hurdle we had to correct that we didn't know. You know, some of the auditors that helped us out, they worked on that, and we found that out. But moving forward, this ADG, this thing, you know, should be solved, and we don't have this problem with audit anymore. And here, you know, I said, the bank reconciliations, they have, they've been going to the auditor today. And that was our biggest hurdle there, Chairman, is to get this done. It's done. And I know you got the July 10th as a deadline. You know, we'll meet that by fall, probably, you know, three or four days of that to get everything in, and so we're done. So it was just a matter of going back and just kind of redoing what the first financial director does that she wasn't capable of doing. Plus, you throw the hurricanes on top of her, and she would just kind of overwhelmed with it all. But here, we've got everything back on track, and we're good to go on the sheriff's office stuff. Any questions on that?
I got a question for you. Did you know yesterday that your, yesterday, did you know that that stuff hadn't been turned in to Powell &amp; Jones? Did you know that?
I knew that, I knew that we was, I know I talked to Michelle, and she said that she would, had talked to Barry Baker about it, and then we was working with the auditors and all. And I thought, and I thought we was close and we was on, but I wasn't 100% sure, no sir.
I'm going to tell you my frustration. And I say this as respectfully as possible because an old man once told me, when I first got elected, "If you don't say it in the meeting, you didn't say it. If you didn't talk about it in the meeting, it wasn't talked about." So as awkward as this is, I'm going to tell you. My frustration with the sheriff's office is on April the 15th, Mr. Vole stood right there at that podium, when I wasn't here and Mr. Scott wasn't here, and for 53 minutes, blistered Mr. Scott and our staff. And you stated at that time later on, you didn't know he was going to say all those things. You're standing here today telling me that you knew, but you didn't know it was due March the 15th, that you agreed to do that. You said, "We will take care of that. It'll be there," as did all the other constitutional, January 10th. March 15th passed. We're on July 1, and now our board, our county, is statutorily late on our audit. And not one time did anybody from the sheriff's office pick up the phone and say, "Hey, we're having some problems. We need some help. We need some guidance. We need you to send somebody over here. We need something because we're not going to meet this deadline." So we go from March the 15th all the way to today, and we have to find out from our auditors that we don't have anything. We've talked about it before with the Mr. Vole situation. We talk about communication. We got a communication problem. When the hell are we going to fix that? Like, that's my frustration. Nobody on your side of the fence wants to talk to anybody else. Meanwhile, now, we look bad. We're over there fighting in Tallahassee, trying to get grant money, trying to get appropriations, trying to do everything that we can to make Swan County better, and now I got a little bitty black eye because my sheriff ain't turned his stuff in, and now I'm late on my audit. That frustrates the heck out of me. And I don't know about the rest of these guys, but I work my ass off over there. And it irks me that you or no one from your office can tell us what the heck's going on over there until we find out and have to go through all of this mess and talk about it. Communication, we wouldn't be here today. When are we going to fix the communication? That's my question to you.
Here again, I apologize for that, Travis, but, you know, my understanding was is that, I mean, I knew, obviously, I knew that we had a problem with the reconciliation of the bank records and so forth and all. And my thoughts were they was going to have it done. And like I say, we just missed it by a couple of days. I mean, it's done today. We just got to get everything turned in, and so, you know, we're there. We just hadn't got everything to the auditors to get done. But we're done. We just got to get everything turned in.
Can I ask you, board members, how many of y'all have met with the sheriff on the 2025-2026 proposed budget? You have. Commissioner Hale? Commissioner Perkins? You have not met with him yet? So I got three of the five, and you've contacted me twice, both times I was out of town. So you're calling me to talk about 2025-2026, and you've met with these three guys, and not one time has you or anyone else said, "Hey, by the way, I still got some issues I'm trying to work out, but let's talk about next year's budget." How am I supposed to give you more money when you won't talk about last year? Answer me, how am I supposed to look these people in the eye that are looking at me, wanting to know what's going on? And all I can tell them is, "I don't know. I don't know. They're not telling us anything." So I'm elected too, and so are these other four guys. And I don't mean to sound pissed off, but I'm pissed off. Like, there's no reciprocity here. It's, "Hey, talk to me about my budget. Hey, talk to me about my budget." When are you going to tell me about your budget? Like, that's what I'm frustrated about, Sheriff. And there's notice, like, hey, we're always worried about trying to CYA over here, but we ain't doing no CYA over here.
Chairman, just like I was saying-
Because I need to hush.
Just like I was saying, you know, you know, we, once I realized that we had some issues with the current finance director that got us into this mix here, you know, I removed her. She's no longer with us. I put in, you know, a capable one that was going to work with us, and she's got it back solved again, you know? So I'm here again, we worked through a problem. We got it solved.
Any other commissioners got any comments, questions? Commissioner White?
Sheriff, I'm not here to beat up on you either, but I'm frustrated as well about this. But I would like to dig a little deeper into that and know, you said you've had to unreconcile bank accounts and re-reconcile. Once you've done that, does the money match the reconciliation?
Yes. Yes, it does, yes.
So we don't have no issues with funds?
No, sir.
And I'm like, I'm like the chairman, and I've said it to you. If you got an issue, just say it. I mean, you can call me anytime and say, "Hey, man, I got a problem," you know? And I'd be willing to listen, or, you know, we'd have a meeting, talk about it, whatever. But I don't think running something up to the deadline without anybody else knowing is probably a good thing to do.
Yes, sir. Which, you know, which I've talked to, you know, you and the chairman on the phone, you know, a couple of times about this, the financial director, about, you know, some of the issues that we was having and so forth and all. But I understand what you're saying, yes, sir. I even talked to Mr. Mobley about it.
Any other commissioners, any questions, comments, concerns?
Chairman, I'll just, and I'll ask the sheriff, do you feel like you can meet the deadline?
Yes, sir, yes, sir. Yeah, yeah. I talked to Michelle, and she's very confident we'll, you know, we'll have it before, way before that, yes, sir.
And I'll just add to what they said, and you know this, you can come to us anytime.
Yes, sir. I understand that, yeah.
And the doors are always open, Joe.
Yes, sir.
I got one other question, Mr.-
Commissioner White?
The software, Mr. Baker, is that the new software we got? And there's an issue with that, with that software that we purchased? I mean, the sheriff said there was a problem with the module, and I was involved in that when we went and looked at that software. And I'm just trying to make sure we ain't got a problem with the software that we purchased that needs to be corrected or whatever. That's what I'm hoping.
If you like, I don't know of any problems on our side. It's where the sheriff and them, it's where they may have something else on their side because it's where, it may be that Michelle can answer that better. But as far as our side, it has taken us a while to get the training to all of our people and stuff, but it is coming along well. But it is, you know, with every new software, there are some bumps in the road, and I can let Michelle talk to you about their-
Yes, sir. And I don't mean to call you out on it. I just, I know we spent a lot of money on that.
I understand.
And I just want to make sure it's stood what we wanted.
Mr. Baker on the hill, is it fully implemented now? I know at one time it wasn't.
It's where, from our side, it's where we have a lot of the modules. It's where there's some additional stuff that we had kind of as, as things that we wanted to do, and it's where that we're trying to do some of those. It's where that, one of those, we, several weeks ago, we, our IT staff worked with Greg and some of them took where they'd be able to do the, it's the read-only function where that y'all were able to look at the, at the numbers our office produces. You're not able to change them because it's where that would negate the whole accounting issues that we're required to do. But it's where that they do have, it's the capability now.
And that's a great thing. That's a good thing where everybody can read it. I get it, you can't change it, but at least if you need to look something up, you can look at it. And that was kind of one of the goals when we got the software. But I won't believe the thing. I just want to find out the software.
It's where there are some other modules that we have not implemented as of yet. Some of the things like the time cards and stuff like that are things that we're still looking at. But as far as the, as the program, you know, is up and working. It's doing well, at least on our side. As the sheriff would have to speak to theirs.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. Commissioner Mobley?
Mr. Meeks, is that the same delay we was having on the deeds we were talking about the other day, the same program or software?
I think that's something different.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, it's the one there is our ORI, which is our new software for the official records portion. And it's another one of those things, any time you go through an upgrade and stuff, it's where it takes a while to get all your old records brought over, and that's been an ordeal.
I think we have some permits or something on that end of pulling up some history on the deeds.
Yeah. It's been a learning curve for all of us on that side. And I have some information I'll bring to y'all at the next meeting on that because it does come with an upgrade for our fraud alert system. And I got with Mandy earlier in the day, and I'd like to bring a lot of that information to you.
Commissioner Perkins?
Yes, sir. Just want to tag along with Commissioner White. I was wondering about with the program that you have, Sheriff, and then your former employee that you had there working it. And then where did the disconnect come from her to the next one that be able to read that program? Because it seemed like everything should have been there recorded by your previous one. And then when the new one came on board, should be to go into the files and pull everything out that you need to have or be to run that system. Because what I kind of look at is that you were saying there that you all have had various audits, I think it was around nine or 10 audits already.
Yes, sir.
So if you had those audits already, then everything should have been, I'm thinking, my way of thinking, should be already in line. And so it should have been easier to retrieve information to be able to make the reports to auditor.
I'm going to let my finance director address that question. She can tell a little more about that.
Okay, thank you.
So it basically came down to, she got overwhelmed. So where deposits were being made into the bank, they weren't being put in the books because she was busy trying to recover from hurricanes, trying to learn the software, trying to learn everything. It just compounded. So when I stepped back in and I started working on everything and getting everything back to where it should be coded and the accounts it should be in, not that anything was missed done, everything went to the bank, everything was good. It's just a matter of putting it in the right line item to get the system correct, to get your numbers to balance. So where I came at with the issue with the bank reconciliation was not enough knowledge with the software. I've had six months of learning at beginning to end the finance side. So the auditor was able to help me today and discover that opening a prior fiscal year and closing it released some of these batches behind the scenes that wasn't coming to my knowledge. We got it all done. It's all reconciled. Almost all of the documents that we have are uploaded for the sheriff file, for the auditors to complete theirs with a couple of things left over, and then we are done. I hear your concerns on communication. Not a problem. I think we understand a little more would be better.
I mean, we're all just pulling in, it should be, all pulling in the same direction for the betterment of our county. And when we got one group that's not talking to the other group, it's hard for us to pull in the same direction. And when one guy's, when all of us are going this way, and one's kind of dragging his feet, just tell us, "Hey, man, I need a little help. Hey, man, I got a little problem." And we can, we can work to get everybody up where do we need to be inside the circle. But when we don't know anything-
Correct.
How can we help?
You're absolutely right, Commissioner. Chairman, I mean, I apologize for that and all, but here again, we just trying to, we just trying to fix the problem, you know? You know, because, I mean, I'm in charge of the money, just like you say, I want to be good steward of the money. I want to make sure that it's spent in the correct way, and I just wanted, I wanted to solve the problem that, you know, nobody created it, I guess. It just, it just happened, and that's why I wanted to explain to you about how it all started from the start to the end, you know? And just kind of the steps that took place. You know, I'm not pointing fingers at anybody. It just, you know, I think Ms. Corbin, she got overwhelmed with it all, and then throw all these hurricanes in there. It just compounded things. And then when Michelle, you know, she does a fabulous job for me in the past, that's why I put her back in there, and she's brought us back, brought us back and all that's, I mean, that's just the bottom line of it. We just, just kind of, it just kind of, basically, a perfect storm with this happened, and then we got back, we got it solved again. So, I mean, we're back good again.
And I understand that, and I'm not pointing fingers at any one person either, not anybody. But we shouldn't have to get to this to talk about that. We should not have to do that. You know, that's my frustration. I'm going to leave it at that. But like, that, you know- Somewhere, we should say, "Hey, this is everybody's money. Guys, I'm having some problems. Can you get the auditors to help me? Can you send one of your guys?" Like, can we do something to fix it?
I guess, I guess I was raised to where, you know, if I have a problem, you know, and I need to fix my problem, okay? And I understand you about the communication and all, but like I say, we had Michelle working on it, we had Ms. Bick in the back working on it, we had a couple auditors, even Mr. Baker's going to give us a guy or two to help us out, and then also Ms. Heather was going to help. So I had plenty of help, you know, to do this job. We just, it was just time consuming. So here again, we wasn't, wasn't ignoring it, we wasn't, you know, anything that. We just, we just had, was, had to get caught up from what's happened, you know, from a year ago. And like I say, these hurricanes sure didn't help us any. But anyway, thank you, Chairman. I want to address the EOC thing. And some of that stuff you're reading, Chairman, I don't agree with at all. And that's why I got Ms. Heather up here. And one, and one thing that, you know, that they, which I think I talked to you on the phone about is the addresses to my employees, which EOC only has two employees, Chris and Heather. But, and if they, if they want me to give everybody their home address and so forth, then I'll be violating the statute 119 because I'm not allowed to do that. So I would think it's our company would know to do that. But what I want Heather to do is go through each problem that they say that we're not, we're not complying to, and tell her that we are complying to these things, Chairman, we are. And I want her to explain it to you.
Hi.
Name and address, please, ma'am. We don't have to give your home address. You can give the EOC address.
Okay. Heather Henderson Schoy, SCHEU, 617 Ontario Avenue Southwest, Live Oak 32064. All right, so do we want to start with the letter, maybe? And just go through the numbers?
Ms., 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 how do you pronounce your last name?
Schoy.
Schoy.
You can call me Henderson. That's why I kept it.
There are-
There's only seven.
Okay, I'm looking at 11. I'm looking at the big spreadsheet.
Oh, the big spreadsheet, that's everything. That's not, and several of those are already accepted.
Here's what I, here's, and board members, do y'all want to go through every single one of these, or do you all want to-
With all due respect, if we're being told that we're not being compliant, I would
With all due respect, if we're being told that we're not being compliant, I would like to have a minute to discuss why we're not being compliant.
How about it?
If we could, please.
I'm, I'm just.
No, 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 get out. We'll get, we'll get to the.
I'll, I'll make it quick. So if you go to number one, it says that we were asking not to have Michelle do the, the audit. So. Um, this, this letter from, I guess it's from Mr. Morrison? Or Mr. Blain? It says that our office is refusing to permit the auditors to speak with Michelle. It wasn't that we were permitting them to speak to her, but she had other stuff to do as far as getting the sheriff's office books in order. And I have 20-plus years of finance experience with 20-plus years of doing audits. And I was the finance director for a year and a half, almost two years. So I had all the accessibility and all the knowledge to perform an audit and give the auditors what they are requesting.
Ms. Schoy, how long you been at the EOC?
I've been in the EOC since October of 23.
So you've been there October 2023. Okay. Did you read the letter that accompanied this audit about it being its highest number-one priority? Every employee of Swanee County should take these auditors' requests as their number-one priority.
And I did.
So you, but you just told me Ms. Emmons was too busy. She had other stuff to do.
Ms. Emmons was working on that, and I have all the accountability and responsibility to do the EM audit because I do all the finances for EM.
Let me ask you a question.
Go ahead.
When this board authorized to spend $105,000, up to $105,000 with these auditors to figure out what was going on over there, what authority do you have to tell these auditors that this board hired to tell them they can't talk to Ms. Emmons who's over the money? What authority do you have? At what time, what's, what's your?
I don't have the authority.
Now, we're gonna get, no, exactly. So you don't have the authority to tell these people that we hired?
But Sheriff St. John does.
So Sheriff, did you tell them that they couldn't talk to Ms. Emmons? No, no, we're, did you tell them they can't talk to Ms. Emmons? Yes or no?
I don't remember.
You don't remember?
I expected saying no, but I know that, that Ms. Henderson here has all the experience in the world and.
That's not what I asked. I asked, did you tell these auditors that they could not talk to Ms. Emmons?
Did not, yes, sir.
You did not. So Mr. Volz's email with quotes that says Sheriff St. John said you are not permitted to talk to Ms. Emmons, that's, that's fiction. Nick, you're coming at me. I'm coming back.
Okay.
Is that fiction?
The only thing, only thing I know is, is, is that he may, he may have misunderstood what I'm saying, but I just know that Heather has the ability and the knowledge to do the audit.
That's not your call. That's their call. That's why we're paying them $105,000.
With all due respect, Ms. Emmons just pays checks. She doesn't do the documentation. She just pays the checks. She just writes checks.
That's why we hired these people, to tell us the answers, to talk to whoever they.
Okay, well, let's go, let's go to that.
If I interrupt you, you don't interrupt me. I'm talking. When you get it back, I will not interrupt you. So when these folks, the letter that accompanied this, that everybody got, when they ask a question to whomever they ask it to, unless you don't want them to speak to them, I suggest you get your attorney involved. When they want to talk to them, that letter said, you let them talk.
They're welcome to talk to her.
That's not what y'all just said.
They are, but she's not gonna know what happened at emergency management because she wasn't involved in emergency management and, at all.
Let them figure that out.
Okay, so let's go back to that.
You go ahead.
We hired them, correct? So our very first walkthrough with this, these, this company that you guys paid $105,000 to audit. On this letter on the back, it says that this implies that your office believes it can reject the request for information if you disagree with the auditors. The requested information is necessary to perform an audit. So you're saying that I can't ask why, right? This says that I can't ask why, but I just have to give them over. So the very first walkthrough that we had with this auditor, we asked her a question. Have you ever audited an emergency management fund? And she said, no. The second question we asked her, do you know what emergency management is? Do you know what it does pertaining to the county? And she said, no. So when she asks for things that don't have anything to do with emergency management, I am in my purview to ask why she requests the information. I.e. Web EOC missions. I have no problem giving her Web EOC missions. However, they've changed the platform and it's gonna take a hot minute for me to get them. Secondly, it has no financial bearing on the county emergency management. This, it's, it's all state of Florida mutual aid. Every single mission that is put in Web EOC is for the county, the city, the town of Brantford, Swanee County Sheriff's Office. It has no cost relation to emergency management or anything in the county. It is all mutual aid and it is all paid for by the state. So all I ask was, why do you need it if it has no financial bearing on what you're doing? To me, as a person who's been through audits before, it, it seems like a mute point. But if you would like me to give that information over, I'll be glad to. But again, it has no financial bearing on this county. Number two, it says that we haven't provided a list of vendors. We've provided an entire list of vendors on 525, or 530, I'm sorry, of 25, with zero parameters. That is the entire vendor list for the Swanee County Sheriff's Office that the sheriff office uses. Then I pulled a report that just showed the EMPG GL vendors, and I gave her that list. I have given her everything that she has asked for, plus some. We were even on a phone call Friday where she went into the system with me on a Zoom call. And she, I showed her, she asked me for specific reports. I pulled those reports, showed her the parameters that we could pull those reports, and we pulled those reports that she needed. Then this number three that you have, it says that we failed to provide, but when you look at the spreadsheet, they accepted it. So how can we fail to provide if they've accepted what we provided them? Number four, we've already went over with the state Web EOC. The one that I want, the expenditure population, it's saying that there are, I'm sorry, it's really little, that there are transactions that were provided per the county in obligation tracking spreadsheets that are not present in EOC, i.e. the Polaris's. The Polaris's were $108,000. There was four of them purchased, purchased by the county during Idalia for Duffy Sporting Goods. Two of them went to 25 Rescue. Two of them went to the Swanee County Sheriff's Office. I have the requisition or acquisition for disposition of property in the property card where the county gave this over to the sheriff's office. There will be nothing in emergency management general ledgers for these because it is, they did not come out of the sheriff's office or emergency management. So there's not $108,000 or Polaris's that are, and then with the employee listing, we're, we're covered under Florida statute 119071 subsection 4.2.8. And you're welcome to look that up. But everything that the auditor has asked for has been given to them. I have had numerous phone calls with the audit herself. I have done everything that she has asked for me. I have given them everything that they've asked for me, plus some. So please explain to me what I am doing that is not in, that is noncompliant.
My turn. Board's turn. Anybody got any questions, comments from Mrs. Schoy?
For the record, I have not spoken to the auditors, not one single time. So if you're asking me to ask them, that's gonna be a Mr. Morrison question. I've, I don't even know their names.
But I have, and we've talked significantly on the things that she needs and the whys and the hows, and I can ask why. I'm within my purview to ask why. You as a business owner would ask why if somebody asked you for something that you're like, that's not.
Ms. Schoy, I'm not gonna argue with you.
I'm not arguing with you. I'm stating facts.
Ask them whatever you would like to ask. Fair enough.
That's not what this letter says, though.
Mr., Mr. Morrison?
Yes, sir.
Did you fabricate this?
No, sir.
So where did you get this spreadsheet from?
From Cherry Becker.
So when did you get this?
Friday.
Friday.
I'm not negating that what she said was not conversational. What I'm negating is, is the things that she's asked for I have given her.
Board, I guess we're gonna sit here all night. Do I have authorization to execute these letters and send it to them? And then we'll, we're gonna let the attorney and Cherry Becker, I mean, is it, I'm looking for some advice here because we're gonna go round and round all night. I didn't speak to them. She said she did. They're saying she did not.
I do know, Mr. Chairman, that the, the auditors are gonna be watching this meeting. They've already told me they want to, so they know what the sheriff's office response is. And the only thing I would point out, and I'm not arguing with anything that Ms. Henderson has said, it's, it's not the asking of why, it's the making the production contingent on giving a satisfactory answer as to why. So a lot of these are stuck in the situation of they haven't been given the information pending an, an answer to why, if that makes any sense. So what you're, nobody's questioning Ms. Henderson's right to ask why. It is, what, what the auditors are questioning is the right to continue to refuse because they're asking.
But what are we, what are we refusing? Employee listings? That's Florida statute, which I stated in the portal. I, whatever the credit cards were that they were asking for were uploaded today. The county match vendor list was uploaded today. It wasn't uploaded last week because I didn't have access to it last week.
Now we're getting somewhere. It was given to them today when this information was from Friday.
Yes, Travis. Commissioner, I'm sorry.
I, I don't take disrespect to that.
So again, Mr. Chairman, it speaks for itself. The only thing that I, I would point out, and this is part of the letter, and this is part of your letter, Mr. Chairman, regarding the employee addresses. No question that those are not going to be subject to disclosure under any circumstance to the public. And giving them to the auditors is not a disclosure to the public. It's not a 119 request. It's the auditors asking for it.
I understand. And when we asked the auditor what she needed them for, she said, because it's just our policy. We do it for everybody.
And that's why, because of that being a troubling thing to turn over, which I understand, if I were in your position, Sheriff, I would, that's where I would instinctually draw a hard line, right? I'm not turning that over. And that's why I put in there, because I asked Cherry Becker why, because that doesn't seem, and they put in there, and that's why I put it in the proposed correspondence from the chairman. The employee address list is to check the addresses of employees against vendor lists. Because a very common way that they check if something's being misappropriated is when people get a little lazy in how they're handling, for lack of a better phrase, stealing money, is they'll simply create a vendor and that'll get paid, and it'll have the same address as an employee address, and they've caught a bunch that way. That's the reason for asking for it. I understand the concern about not turning it over.
Then why couldn't she tell me that on the phone or, or over the web call?
I can't speak to y'all's.
No, I, I understand. I'm just.
That's why I put it in the letter, so that way it wasn't, so you didn't think it was just for the, because.
But I also.
I also, for that one in particular, I joined when you were like, why? Because that wouldn't seem.
Well, and I, and I've reached out to a couple of other firms and it wasn't their common practice, so it just, there are things with sworn employees that we just can't give out. And I would like to remind all of you that I, this is just one more thing added to me that I have to do. This isn't affecting the sheriff. This isn't affecting Mr. Volz. This is affecting me. I do all of the audit stuff. I pull all the information. I have all of the meetings. I do all of the Zoom calls. So when you say this was uploaded today, yes, because I've been working on it and I had meetings, and I have, I have a job that I still do every day on top of making sure that this is on top of. So I'm one person.
My point wasn't that you hadn't gotten around to it yet. My point was that this was given to him Friday, and you did that today. So if there were some discrepancies, you missed in terms of that.
I misunderstood what you said.
I can tell you're taking things personal. It's nothing personal. Is Mr. Volz still employed with EOC?
Yes.
Yes.
Is Mr. Volz turning the letter of resignation?
He hasn't, he hasn't to be yet, but I understand that he will be, yes, sir.
So Mr. Volz, do you know an anticipated resignation date for Mr. Volz?
I think around the 11th or 15th.
Of July.
Of July. So Mr. Volz is departing from Swanee County Sheriff's Office on July the 11th?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
And he's departing because he took a crisis management national job with Verizon.
Fair enough. I, I asked because he's not present.
That's why.
And the board got questions, comments, concerns? Or do I have authorization to execute these letters so that we have this on the record in writing that we're asking for this information? Do I need a vote on that, Mr. Morrison?
Yes, sir, just because you're signing on behalf of the board.
So the first letter, guys, would be on the annual audit with Powell and Jones. Do I have a motion to authorize me to execute this letter to the sheriff just asking for that information, which he's already told us he could fulfill? Motion by Commissioner Hale. Second by Commissioner White. All in favor, aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. 5-0. Second one, do I have a motion to send this letter in regards to the Cherry Becker audit to Sheriff St. John? Have a motion by Commissioner Perkins. Second by Commissioner Mobley. All in favor, aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries 5-0. Thank y'all for coming.
I didn't understand the, the letters you said you're gonna send to me.
The letters you have, she has. It's the same letters. I just have to have board authority. I can't just sign. I got, they gotta approve it. She has them. Y'all have them. It went out on email. It's the same.
The one we already have.
We're putting it in writing. We're requesting information.
Let me ask something here. Ms. Henderson here has answered every question that they have put in there. I mean, do you agree with that?
No, I, I, like I said, no, I don't agree with that because I haven't spoken to them. Obviously, they have some, they have some.
What they, what they, the reason I'm asking you is because you give me till the 10th of July to make, to make this right. And that's why I had Heather come up here to go, go one, one by one by one to say, hey, we are, we are complying, Chairman.
Sheriff, I don't know if you read the letter, but in the very, on the very last paragraph of that letter, it just says, please provide all information to CB within 10 days of this letter. If the sheriff's office is unable or unwilling to provide all requested information, this letter is an invitation to you to appear before the board of county commissioners at its July 15, 2025 meeting. We're not, there's no penalties. We're not turning you in to anything. We're just saying, hey, y'all work this out between now and January the, or July the 10th?
That's, that's, that's what I'm saying, Chairman. She, she just done that.
Okay, they're gonna watch the video. We got a 5-0 vote. The letter's coming to you. So we gotta, I sensed your sarcasm.
It's not, I'm not being sarcastic.
The letter's coming, so y'all, y'all figure it out, and then we'll, they work for us. So until they're happy with what they're getting, we're gonna have to keep doing this. I don't know what else to do. If they say, no, I'm not getting it, and you say, yes, you are, Mr. Morrison, I don't know where we go from there. Doge, the gov, I mean, I don't know. If the people that we hired are telling us, no, 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 we don't have it, and they're saying, yes, 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 you do, now we gotta go to a fourth party, I guess, to come in here and mediate that. So what do we do?
Well, it's only two grants.
I'm asking the county attorney.
Mr. Chairman, if we get to a point where the board is not satisfied with the state of the audit and there's no further information coming, then I can go through the procedures for what would be an appropriate referral, but it would basically be going up the food chain, basically to the governor's office and to the legislative audit committee and the auditor general.
They have every transaction that's ever went through since.
Fair enough. Fair enough.
So I don't know what else I can supply then.
Chairman, we, we complied with everything they wanted.
Fair enough. I appreciate y'all's position.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, number 17, administrators' comments.
Mr. Chairman, I believe there's public.
I'm sorry, Mr., I'm, anybody from the public want to talk about that? I'll give you three minutes. I'm sorry, Mr. Hancock. Sir?
It took you that long to get here? My name is Bo Hancock. I live at 6135 Wiggins Road.
Speaking to the mic, Mr. Hancock, please, sir.
I think that at this point, given the fact that the sheriff has come up here, and did y'all know he's bought a big bus with a big bumper on the front? Because he just threw every damn body in his department under it. He took no blame for anything at all. He blames everybody else and hurricanes and tornadoes. Nothing. He sent bowls here when you weren't here, and Greg was not here. It was an ambush. He knew it. He sent him up here. He sat there, listened to bowls. When he started slinging all his little arrows, and he didn't get up and stop him. Didn't say nothing, didn't do anything. Y'all gave him another deadline. Hell, he ain't had a deadline yet. Don't keep giving him a deadline. And talked about communications. It came up with the Bowles presentation. Nobody's communicating. Guess what? That was a couple of months ago. He still ain't communicating. You think he's going to change? He is not. EOC. I don't think that Heather is an auditor. I mean, she has not represented herself in being an auditor. She's worked on audits. So I don't know if she's qualified as an auditor. For her to start asking an auditor, does she know what the question is and the reason why she questioned? Did they give her an answer? I don't know. That'll come out later. With Volz resigning, I think that's a good thing. Not a problem with that at all. But one thing I will tell you, I think you need to solve this. You don't need, you do need another party, and that party is the governor. I think you need to contact the governor's office and have him assign FDLE to come in and investigate the entire sheriff's department as well as EOC. You're not getting anywhere with Cherry Becker. They're stonewalled it. They're not gonna do anything any different. And I'm like you, Travis. I've had enough of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hancock. Is anybody else from the public wishing to speak on this item? If y'all, if there's more than one of y'all, y'all can start lining up on the door. I think the public deserves an opportunity to speak since we've sat here for a long time and went back and forth.
Name is Harry K. Weaver, Jr.
Harry K. Weaver, Jr., Swan County, long time. I've listened to all of this. Captain Hancock, I listened to. I appreciate what you said. You said everything that I could say and more. Thank you, sir, for being the citizen you are and the firefighter professional that you are and always will be. You're a hero, sir. I support y'all. I'm appalled. Call the governor. Let's get it over with. Office of Executive Investigations, FDLEs.
Thanks, sir. Name and address for the record, please, sir.
Moses Klepper, 1458102, Second Path, Live Oak. Y'all may or may not, I get up here on so much stuff, y'all may or may not recall me being up here before on this matter. Not on the audit matter, but my concerns. In the last election, I didn't plan on voting for sheriff. I was going to just leave that vote blank. But as I heard, as I watched and everything, he got me interested, and I started digging like I do on a lot of stuff. And I got majorly concerned when I saw $16 million and don't have to answer to anyone. There's no, I mean, the budget, that's so bogus on any budget. I mean, there's not expenditures, you know, just, just, there's no, and I don't even necessarily need lie on item, but just, just general expenses, no description of anything. So I come up with a FOIA request. I investigated, I got on the statutes and read up. The sheriff referred to FS 119. Well, currently, the sheriff is in violation of FS 119, aside from this audit matter, okay? I don't know if this audit falls in line with FOIA or not. I'm not an expert on any of this. But I would like to read a short, I'm sure I could do it within my limit. On July 11, 2024, I wrote, I hand-delivered this to the sheriff's office. Sheriff St. John, pursuant to FS 119, I'm requesting an opportunity to inspect, according to statute, photograph and/or obtain copies of actual public records of total actual expenditures to date by month, including the full previous two fiscal years. Actual inventory records to date, including the full previous two fiscal years. Actual number and list of internal investigations and administrative complaints by investigative parties named conducted since January 2021, together with investigators finding summation narrative and/or conclusions already made. I request a waiver of all fees for this request since the disclosure of the information I seek is not primarily in my commercial interest and is likely to contribute significantly to the public understanding of operations and activities of the government. Making the disclosure a matter of public interest. If you choose to assess fees, please provide me the detailed explanation of why, as well as proposed itemized bill for fulfilling my request. Should you choose to deny my request...
Wrap it up, Mr. Klepper. I said three minutes. I got to stand by that, buddy.
All right.
Wrap it up, please, sir.
Well, basically, the statute requires 15 minutes of what I requested. I can, I could visually inspect, according to statute. Read FS 11907. So the sheriff stands since that date in violation, and so...
Thank you, Ms. Klepper. Anybody else from the public wishing to speak on this matter? You know the drill.
Wayne Hanica, 1188393rd Road, Live Oak. First of all, thank you, Mr. Chairman. You handled a very difficult situation extremely well.
This ain't fun.
I know it's not. But you're right, it's here, and you got to do what you got to do. It's just disappointing that we get to this point. And I think when it's all over, you really need to think about, does EOC need to be under your control or under the sheriff's department? Just something down the road to think about. I'm sure this is all going to wash out, good or bad, but I do appreciate that you're concerned and what you've done here today. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else from the public wishing to speak? All right, we're moving on. Item 17, administrators' comments and information. Mr. Scott.
Well, let the commission be aware, you may be, but we received notice last week that the agreement we had from the appropriation, we have a DEM last year for the $2.5 million for the regional shelter. We had asked for a modification about using 1 million of that for reimbursement for land acquisition, 1.5 million for design and development of the property of the project. We received that document, and just want to let you be aware of that. And if you'd like to go ahead and authorize the chairman to sign that or staff to sign that, so they're, every day they're asking us to get it signed. So didn't know if you wanted to approve that tonight or put it on the agenda for next time, but we've been talking about this same money for over a year, so...
Mr. Morrison, are you aware of all that stuff?
Yes, sir.
Okay. What's your position on that?
Candidly, I would want it to be an agenda item that we can see.
That's kind of what I was thinking, Mr., I hate to execute something like that of that magnitude off the cuff.
No, no problem. We'll bring it back next time.
Yes, sir, please.
Wanted to, also, we talked before about Enterprise, the leasing company for the trucks and vehicles for the county. We wanted to film the agenda for next meeting before the budget cycle. It's for pickup trucks and vans and that sort of thing, that we can do leasing for that. The school board, the city, City of Lake City, I believe, and others do that same program. It looks favorable. If you'd rather have it as a workshop and do it before the meeting, we can do that. It'll probably take about a 10-minute presentation, let y'all ask questions, so it's a lot shorter than some of the agenda items we have. But if you want to do it as an agenda item or a workshop, just let us know, let me know, and we'll advertise if it's a workshop, and not, we'll just put it on the agenda.
Just a presentation?
Right.
I would request, instead of doing a workshop, just do an agenda item, and we get presentations all the time. Do you foresee a problem with that, Mr. Morrison?
No, sir. The workshop is to workshop.
And there would be some discussion, where y'all could ask questions, so...
Yeah, I mean, like Mr. Morrison said, workshops are for us to sit here and try to pound something out and try to figure out a direction for us to go.
Agreed.
So if it's just a presentation, I'd say just put it on the agenda.
Lastly, I'd like to commend our very own Commissioner Mobley for his certification as a certified county commissioner. He received an award from FAC last, last meeting, and is proud to think, I think all of y'all are certified now, I believe.
Can we get, can we get Commissioner Mobley down front for a photograph?
I'm sorry, this is your, I'm going to get out of the picture.
You're just going to make him stand there and hold it?
Yeah, that's horrible.
Straight three-year time there.
I think we proved he did a speech.
Yeah, that would be good. Look at all the cameras out there.
Like a giant sticky note.
Speech, speech.
Also, we had two staff that got certified, County Government Education Program, that was Jason Furry and Mandy Frederickson. Both of those had a competition among themselves, who was going to pass the test first and get the certification, and they both did at the same time. So, you know, congratulate them also.
You had to hire a score.
Mandy.
And probably the most prestigious award that was given is a quiet, quietly given, and that's most photogenic, that was given to our very own Maurice Perkins, because he, he follows that camera around like, I won't say, but...
Maurice, so the fish have got the fish.
That's all I've got, Mr. Chairman. Listen, anybody's got any questions for me?
Anybody have any questions, Mr. Scott?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Board members, closing comments. Commissioner Hale.
Hale went last time.
Did Hale go first last time?
That's okay.
Commissioner Perkins?
Go for it.
Go ahead. He got his feelings hurt down here.
No.
Commissioner Perkins, you go.
Well, I just say, I think they wanted to come out for our Juneteenth celebration was good at the RCM, and you came out and enjoyed it, and we thank you for your help and support. I forgot, left a picture of the board of county commissioners in the ad, but thank you for the ad. Had a great time at the conference down there, even though I got beat up every time I turned around, but it was all good. And wish everybody well for July the 4th celebration, and remember those who gave us our independence. But one thing before I close, though, I just, you know, thanks to Ms. Mandy Frederickson and Ms. Brenda, you know, have helped me out there. You guys wasn't there throughout the whole full conclusion of the conference. I know you had to leave, you know, you...
Some of us had to work.
Yeah, you had to work, so I understand that. So there was some thing that was given out for at the tables, and I just took the liberty to bring it to you all because Ms. Brenda and Ms. Mandy, and Mr. Norrie back there thought that would be good. So, oh, Mr. Chair, you're the first one.
I'm a little nervous what's in this bag.
That's your man bag. What should happen about? Look at it, whole body shaking.
I'm going to show all my pictures when we get there.
Thank you, Commissioner Perkins. I appreciate you.
You got your man bag.
There's snake or something going on out there.
I'd like you to go out front with your man. I left yours, let's see, I got yours too. But you did, y'all go out front, get your picture.
I ain't going out there.
I know what I would have missed, but yeah.
It matches you for me.
I'm going to disobey that request.
Hey, you're talking about this with Megan now.
Jamie and Christian here aren't getting pictures of us holding their bags. Not happening. Are you good, Commissioner Perkins?
I'm good, yes, sir.
All right, Commissioner Mobley.
Remember to keep Mr. Taylor family in your prayers. Mr. Robert passed away. And appreciate the staff and appreciate everybody for coming.
Thank you, Commissioner Mobley. Commissioner Perkins?
Perkins.
I mean Hale, I'm sorry.
The man bag got it.
I'll leave it alone.
He knows he missed him a fat man bag.
No, we had a great time down there. We learned a lot, folks, and I'll say this, those fact meetings and a lot of these conferences we go to, we get a chance to network with other counties, other commissioners, city officials, mayors. There was a gentleman there speaking. I'm going to tell you guys, what was the name of the movie? The gentleman that spoke, he got one leg?
Unstoppable.
Unstoppable. I'm telling y'all, you've got to watch that man's story. I cried like a baby. I ain't going to lie to you. Cried like a baby just listening to it. He was one of the most motivational speakers I've ever heard. So look him up. I think it's worth it, and I just appreciate my board being there. We had a great time and, again, learned a lot. So thank you all for being here.
Anthony Robles.
That's it.
Anthony Robles, Unstoppable.
He's an amazing gentleman right there.
He was born with one leg and became a NCAA champion wrestler.
Yep.
Commissioner, thank you, Commissioner Hale. Commissioner White.
Thanks, everybody, for coming. Had a great time at the fact. It's always fun, and glad some of the other employees got to go with us this time to network and see all the people we get to see and do some of the things we get to do. And if any of y'all want to see Perkins' pictures, I got them on my phone, but I took.
They were in every room we went in for every meeting.
If you want to get your picture taken, you just stand next to him, and you're going to surely get it.
Hey, hatery.
But July the 4th in Brantford on Friday, if you can, please come down and spend some of your money. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner White. So we got July 4th, Friday, in Brantford, and then July 4th here in Live Oak, their Freedom Fest, where they're doing that Purple Hearts proclamation that I just read. So that starts at 6:00 or 6:30.
6:30 is the, this is when they start their party.
The ceremony starts at 6:30. Okay, so 6:30 on Friday here in Live Oak. That, thank you, Commissioner Perkins, for my lovely bag there.
Yes, sir.
I'm sure my five-year-old would love that.
Commissioner Hale.
Oh, my.